Hello, everyone. I'm Michael O'Reilly, Chairman of the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. It is May the 20th, 2021, and it is 7:03 PM. I'll hereby call this meeting to order. Please stand and join me, those of you who are here, in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now call the roll, starting on my right. Dominic Panici here.
Ryan Condon here.
Michael O'Reilly.
Wes Lynn, present.
Nicole Duco, present.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner, present.
And we have Donna Slinski, Kristi Riley. Welcome, Kristi, Replanting and Zoning Secretary, and Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start with general public participation tonight. General public participation. The commission welcomes public participation and asks that speakers limit their time. Speakers are requested to state their first name and address for the record. May bring objective comments about planning and zoning matters. Chair's discretion to limit comment time generally, three minutes is allotted, and written statements are always welcome. Are there any members of the public here tonight that I could address the commission on any matters not before the commission or likely to come before the commission?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yay. Hi, this is Kelly Plunkett, 34 Kendall Creek Lane, and I am the Monroe Farmers Market Manager. So I just wanted to let you know I was here in case you had any questions when you got further into your agenda.
Hello, Kelly. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
When's the farmers market starting?
June 18th.
Oh, right around the corner.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight, we have some public hearings. The first two, which have been postponed, are AAA 2021-02 and SCP 2021-06. Both have been postponed to the next regular meeting by the applicant. We drew up one public hearing tonight, AAA 2021-05, file number 1019E. This is one of the Monroe Town Planning and Zoning Commission's zone, not zone, but text amendment that we have put forth. So go ahead, Ryan, you have to.
He just wanted to go get it.
Okay.
So we just need to stall.
So this is a text amendment that we have been working on for some time in the Subcommittee.
Chairman, do you want to seat the alternates first?
Oh, yes, let's seat the alternate. Because of two absences, we're going to need to seat Dominic Panici and Nicole.
There was some good filler.
So we'll be soon hearing from Rick of the text amendment, but before we do, we have the legal notice.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice a public hearing to be held May 2021. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, May 20th, 2021, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid go-to meeting and limited in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall, Council Chambers, 7 Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, 06468 concerning the following. RAA 2021-05, file number 1019E, petition for a regulation text amendment application to existing 4.1 non-residential districts, 6.3 signs, and 8.2 supplemental standards to revise outdoor storage or materials signage and supplemental standard regulations as detailed in proposed text dated 3/31/21 revised for 1421 and 42121. Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission applicant. Please check the Town of Monroe website for announcements of meeting cancellations, rescheduling, and for instructions for attending and/or participating in person or remote electronically. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices by appointment and on the town's website. Notice was published in voices. White.
Thank you, Ryan. And Rick, you have the.
Yes, Exhibit 1, text amendment proposal of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exhibit 2, Western Connecticut Council of Governments referral. Exhibit 3, Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments referral, and 4, North Kentucky Valley Council of Governments referral. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we'll start with a presentation of changes.
Okay, does everyone have a copy of the text proposal? Donna has it on the screen. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is Phase 2 of our ongoing efforts of reexamining the Monroe Planning and Zoning Regulations. The first phase involved the outdoor dining, which we adopted and has been moving along nicely with the minor site plan application. Phase 2 involves tonight's consideration, which involves outdoor storage of materials and some miscellaneous amendments to signage and some other restrictions which all go Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we probably leave this hearing open insofar as two of our regular members are not present. Our next meeting will be June 3rd. Okay, all right, having said that, please go to page 2. And we are starting with the proposed standards, the new standards. Outdoor storage area shall be restricted to the following standards. Currently is not to exceed 20% of the gross floor area of the principal building. Since I've been employed in the Planning and Zoning Department, I have routinely received calls requesting that the commission consider amending the text amendments regarding outdoor storage. It is such an integral part of not only industrially zoned land, but as well as commercially zoned areas. So as the commission is aware, we took this to the zoning Subcommittee level, and then it was brought to the full commission, and the full commission said, let's move ahead with the public hearing. We are opening the public hearing tonight. We are looking at changing six of our commercial and industrial zones. B1 district proposing to allow up to 20% of the lot area. B2 district, the same, 20% of the lot area. Limited office district, up to 20%. Our industrial, there are three industrial districts. I1 up to 40%, I2 up to 40%, and I3 also up to 40%. The rationale behind this is the industrial lots are a lot larger in size, and because of their geographical location and minimal impact to residential neighborhoods, we felt that the 40% was a reasonable standard to propose. Our commercial B1, B2, which are on Route 25 and Route 111 and part of Route 34, the lots are smaller, and the zoning Subcommittee thought it would be better to hold it at 20%. Now, these amendments have been circulated to the public, they've read the legals, and I am getting positive feedback on these considerations. It is up to this commission to decide what is best for the town, but this is what we're proposing for tonight, and we'll see if we get any public input from that. Moving on, that was number 3, paragraph number 3. Moving on to paragraph number 5. Materials shall be stored in an environmentally safe and orderly fashion and shall be properly secured. We eliminated the contents of outdoor storage shall be temporary in nature. That's inconsistent, obviously. Moving on to section 6.3 signage. On paragraph C, we are eliminating no variance shall be granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals concerning any sign. These text amendments were provided to the town attorney, and that provision is inappropriate in the Monroe zoning regulations, as you should not restrict one's ability to seek a variance on the sign regulations. So we are striking that out because it's inconsistent with state statutes.
Does that mean that they're able to get a variance?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Subject to the ZBA, which has a public hearing, and deciding whether or not to grant it based on the circumstances. All right, moving on to page 4. Permitted freestanding signs shall be located no closer than, right now it's 10 feet from any property line or street line. We are recommending that it be no closer than five feet from the street line and no closer than 10 feet from any other line, which would be side and rear property line. Now, keep in mind, the right-of-way has the pavement, and it also has the shoulders where sidewalks go. Then the property line starts. Right now, it's 10, no closer than 10 feet. We are recommending that the commission consider a lesser amount of five feet. We have examined all the freestanding signs. Most of them comply with the 10-foot. You have older signs in town, as you know, like every town, and some are closer, and we believe that five feet should not obstruct sightline. The whole thing here is twofold, sightline, public safety, and also having a snow shelf. But generally speaking, you know, all the business zones are on a state highway, the right-of-ways are pretty wide, and the snow shelf is not an issue. One thing unique about Monroe is none of the commercial zones are on a local road, or most of the commercial zones are on a state highway. And also, this was initiated through staff because the property owners, once again, want more exposure. So it's your call if you feel comfortable with the reduction from 10 to 5. It's a five-foot difference. Okay, continuing on to page. Page 9, design standards for portable signs. These are basically the temporary signs that go out during the day and that are brought in at night. Right now, for each business, you're only permitted one portable sign. Now, I eliminated that with some other restrictions. I am here to recommend that you consider no more than two signs per business. And talking with my department and others, we don't want this to get out of control. If we don't have a maximum, you will get some tenants that put out three, four, fives, especially the ones that are set back very far and if there's a lot of frontage. We learned a lot from this executive order that the businesses needed these portable signs. It really helped them get through this difficult time. So staff has heard from the business community that the one sign is excessive, especially if you have a unit in a strip shopping center that's kind of removed, that has special events, sidewalk sales. They like to have a portable sign up near the sidewalk and one down by the entrance coming in. So the way it's drafted here, there's no maximum. I am hearing from staff that they want the commission to put the brakes on no more than two. I felt comfortable with up to three, but once again, when you have multiple tenants in a shopping center with 10 tenants, that's a lot of temporary signs, portable signs. So please keep in mind your thoughts on the maximum number, but what I'm hearing from staff is to hold it two per unit. And the commission can also impose more. If it's a standard fronting business that has good exposure, you know, you may want to hold it at two, but the second one can only be used for sidewalk sales. You know, you want to give it a purpose. And there's so many variables that can happen with multiple signs. People can put their two right out in the front, and you're like saying, this is redundant. Why do you have to have so many? And you could even have a small store that has three tenants, that's six signs. So we got to deal with the maximum number. So give it some thought when you're driving around this weekend and envisioning the total number of signs you feel comfortable with. But we do have sidewalk specials, they want signs there, and then we do have businesses that want to have the exposure out by the main highway. Continuing to page 12, the last page. Under our automobile service shop, automobile body shop, a gasoline station, right now you prohibit the outdoor display or sale of products or merchandise. As staff reported to you, Noble Gas came in with a propane tank dispenser. And the commission, after the zoning Subcommittee reviewed it, felt that that is a reasonable request, but the commission still wants to review it through a site plan, and they want to put it in the appropriate location. Using Noble Gas as an example, they have a landscape area to the right side of the building, they would put it there. The sidewalk system goes right there, because as you know, when you get a propane tank, an employee has to follow you out, open it up, give it to you, and you give them your old one in many cases. So this is to reverse or eliminate the restriction in the outdoor display of products and merchandise. I used a propane tank as an example because that's the one that's being asked, but there will be other products, and obviously, the commission will have the final say through a site plan or a modification of site plan. So you will be able to decide where it goes, and obviously, you want to put it in the right location. So staff is suggesting that you do eliminate it, and so these businesses can move along. Your first test case will clearly be Noble Gas, because I have an application that cannot go to the next step until this amendment is adopted by the commission. And then the last one is, as determined in the Subcommittee level, the State of Connecticut Motor Vehicle Department regulates the number of cars you can park depending on the type of license that you have. So paragraph number 8, the rental or sale of vehicles shall be permitted pursuant to appropriate State of Connecticut license authorizing the selling and renting of used and new vehicles at an automobile service shop or automobile body shop. The commission put in restrictions, including no more than three. So this is inconsistent with the state. If it was ever challenged, you would probably lose. That's why we revisited this regulation, and that's why we rewrote it the way it is, to be consistent with the State of Connecticut licensing. So these are, this is the Phase 2 text amendments, that's before the commission.
All right, are there any questions from any of the commissioners?
I have a.
Go ahead.
Starting with this last one down here. So you're saying, we're saying no more than three cars parked out on the exterior?
Currently.
Current?
Right.
What are we moving into?
The State of Connecticut, I'm going to provide you a list. I was going to get it tonight, and I forgot. The State of Connecticut has all different types of licenses, new cars, used car, automobile repair's license, and they have the restrictions on there. Now, you will still review it, because your job is to make sure that the number of cars being parked there do not jeopardize the fire lanes, do not jeopardize the orderly movement of vehicles. But the State of Connecticut regulates how many cars can go on the lot depending on the type of license that they're securing. So you still have an involvement in that.
Question is, the rental place that now has five or six cars parked in the parking lot, will they be restricted?
That I'm not sure of, Dabik. Let me look into that. I don't have an answer on that one, so.
No reason, if you restrict them, then you're almost limiting their.
Yeah. I have to find out what license they come under. I think it's a different license, other than motor vehicle. I could be wrong.
If we go back to the front, we have a couple of questions.
Well, that would be freak talk, I think.
Yeah.
So on item 3, we're saying that A and B, B1 and B2 are 20% and 20%, and we're leaving it at 20%?
Yes. Those are commercially zoned areas. Most of those parcels are one and two acres, you know. You have some smaller ones, but the Subcommittee felt that the 20%, which is better than the restriction right now, will still give them the flexibility that they need. I have received positive feedback from real estate brokers and property owners that this is fair, it's reasonable, and it's not too excessive.
Okay, I agree with giving more exposure on item H. And a couple of other. So we have two signs now for an item number, design standards, two signs, but what if somebody wants, and really needs another third sign? Would the staff be able to?
Only if you put in the regulations, because you're going to modify this initial text amendment.
I like.
After you give it some thought, because there's so many variables, as you know, that are out there. But what we don't want to happen is too much of a thing, and we get complaints about unsightliness.
I agree with two, but I'd like to be flexible, to leave it up to staff if a special sign is needed, and it doesn't impose too many signs. Okay.
That's what I went in initially on that philosophy. Give the staff the ability, but then I got some feedback that you don't want to go excessive because then the commission's going to get complaints.
I agree.
Why did you go to this amount? It's overkill. You got to reconsider bringing it back.
All right, I have no more questions. Thank you.
I always like to err on the side of caution, like go with two. If it works out well, then you can, you always need to revisit your regulations, especially when it comes to a matter involving quantity, because you don't know what the market's going to yield.
Okay, any other questions by any other commissioners?
I have some. Relating to the outdoor storage, you know, staff feels that these percentages are adequate, you know, I'm good with it, based on the percentages that you presented tonight. I'd like to think that you guys have a much better idea of what the potential applicants need to operate profitably and efficiently, and this is the feedback you've gotten, received from applicants and.
Right, and remember, this is still going to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their site plan review. We're going to see, we're going to limit it to the side and rears.
Got it. Yep. As far as the grandfathering period of the pre-existing non-conforming signs that we talked about earlier, do you have an idea of what that timeframe is? How long does the sign have to be up before we consider it pre-existing, non-conforming?
I don't know definitively, like accessory structures, it's a three years.
Yep.
I don't know if it falls under that.
They have a lot of old signage, and I'm curious, you know.
But generally speaking, when a sign is pre-existing, non-conforming, let's just say hypothetically, after a one-year period, because, you know, enforcement, you have to show good faith that you try to correct it.
Sure.
I know with structures, you know, building-type structures, it's three-year period, but the sign is, I'll find out.
And as far as the sandwich signs are concerned, I know we talked about this in the Subcommittee, I didn't hear you make mention of any timeframe on these sandwich signs. My personal preference is two signs per tenant for a two-week period, twice a year. So you're basically proposing that they have two sandwich signs indefinitely, they could have them out all year round?
At this point, we want to start at this bar, except for the quantity. Well, I'm raising the quantity issue.
Yeah.
That's your call.
Yep.
But the length of time theory is obviously an issue that you have to deal with.
The time is during the summits, and it's a one-year permit.
A one-year permit.
From January 1st, no, it's a whole year.
Well, I'm thinking about this for like restaurants, like a restaurant might have their specials out front two weeks.
Yeah, we do it for special events, like for sidewalk sales.
Temporary signs that can blow around in weather conditions, and you know, after a while, when there's too many out there, they just become a blur. You know, people don't even, you know, take notice of them. So, you know, and we were also discussing online permitting for these as well, right?
Absolutely.
That's going to be adopted soon, so that would make it easier to get these permits, and this way you guys can keep a handle on who has them out and who doesn't.
Right, we need that contact person, because if we're not bringing them in at night.
Right, they're supposed to come in at night.
They have to.
Yep.
You can't keep them around, they get vandalized, and it's just not what it was intended for.
Right. You know, I think about, yeah, like Chuck's Corner, for instance, with all the different tenants over there and the amount of frontage. If you had two signs per, you would have, you would probably have 25 signs out in front of that building.
Yeah.
If everybody put those out, and you know. And the last thing is, as far as on the automobile service shop, this does not pertain to dealerships, correct?
Right.
Because that's come up in the past, too, where we were trying to figure out how many cars we could sell, and so this.
This is service shops, body shops, gasoline stations.
Okay.
Yeah, gasoline stations, they don't sell cars anymore like they used to for the.
Right, of course. So the dealership side of things.
Yeah, that's it.
Another time, because that's been a sticking point also.
Is that allowed in our regulation? I thought they weren't.
I don't know.
It keeps coming up next.
I thought, for some reason, I was thinking dealerships aren't allowed in our regulation, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, there's a restriction on that, Ryan. There is a restriction.
But this isn't pressing it.
No.
No, because, yeah, if they're not allowed, they're, yeah.
And I have one more question on the sandwich signs. You know, with our holiday coming up, some towns restricted on our holidays for the obvious reason.
Yeah.
Because you have parades and to bring them in for holidays. I didn't put that in. I'm just hoping that they use their common sense.
Yeah.
Saying.
And I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to stunt anybody's business, you know, the marketing strategies or anything like that, but it does present, you know, line of sight issues, and it can get hectic having too many of them out there in front of these buildings. So my only, my thought was to have a permitting process and do it for two weeks, twice a year.
And as you know now, stores are open seven days a week. When I was younger, they were closed on Sunday. That's done. Society expects it.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I have.
Anyone else on the commission?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I agree with what you're saying, but at the same time, right now, the businesses that are really failing are the ones that need those signs the most. So it's a catch-22. We want to give them a little bit. I think two weeks, twice a year is, might not be not enough, maybe you want to reconsider. You know, but look, it's no good to have a business in town, it's not making money, it's going to close.
Yep.
It hurts everybody.
And I want to emphasize. And I want to emphasize, the banners and those waving flags, those are prohibited. Things were lax because of the executive order. That's not permitted. So when we, when we decide on this and it appears the number's going to increase, maybe minimal, minimal, but those are prohibited and we will enforce those. Because if you have, if you have that all together, it really
A mess.
is too much.
Yeah, cheapens the shopping centers.
But they like those. You know, we allow grand opening banners for the initial opening, like for 30 days, but not around the clock.
All right, any other questions by the commissioners? If not, we'll go to the public. Are there any members of the public with us tonight that have any questions about this text amendment? If not, then we'll go back to Rick. So Rick, you said you wanted to leave this open?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, insofar as two of our regular members wanted to participate, and I'll get the information that the commission's requesting, and I'll start tinkering with the language, you have some alternatives to take.
Thank you. So we will hold over this hearing for tonight. Do you have meeting minutes from May the 6th? Does everyone have, do you have meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I was requested to have this tabled.
The minutes?
Yeah. For.
It's okay, I just wasn't sure, I honestly couldn't remember whether I had sent them to you. If you have them, that's fine. Go for it.
No, this is May 6th. No, I'm fine. I'm thinking of the meeting in June.
Okay.
Staff has to revisit the, the language in it. I'm sorry, I was confused. May 6th is fine.
It's not June.
I mean, I'm sorry, what am I saying? I'm thinking I'm one month ahead. No, this is, this was our last meeting.
Yeah.
And I had a commissioner request that it be tabled.
Okay.
To add more information in it.
Okay, then we'll hold off on that also.
It was a reasonable request, I know, to give it some more thought. I thought it was in June already.
For up to date.
I lost my.
All right, so we do not have any application deliberations or determinations pending. Number nine, farmer's market. Joe has a application or a letter requesting that the commission allow alcohol sales for off-site consumption at the farmer's market, something that has been going on for some time now. State of Connecticut licenses liquor stores, packaged stores, if you will, in regards to where they can sell alcohol off-site for off-site consumption. The farmer's market has been already doing this, I believe, with Jones's, selling wine for off-site consumption. And I believe Voracious wants to now have the ability to sell their craft beers for off-site consumption. The state of Connecticut allows the commission to deny this if we want to deny it.
Right, you need to take into consideration the proximity to places of worship, nursery schools, et cetera.
But I'm inclined to allow it. Is there any discussion?
I'm inclined to allow it as well.
I know Kelly's on the phone. Kelly, where is the farmer market going to be this year, the green or here?
Yes, it will be at the green. And Sunset Vineyards has been with us, this will be their fifth season. They're fully aware of the limitations for house of worship, et cetera, and so where they're located doesn't impact, where they're located on the green doesn't impact those limitations.
Okay, yeah, because I know that one preschool isn't even open during that time, so there's no one there.
Right, right. The only change is that now we'd like to bring Voracious on.
Okay.
So we've had Sunset for a while, but Voracious is brand new for us. They have to apply for the state license as well as this location permission, which is what's being brought forth.
That was my next question, Kelly, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with this, I think it's a great idea.
With the local business.
Local businesses, yeah.
Dominic? Are you okay with this?
With the off-site liquor? Yes, I'm okay with it, with the standard restrictions, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with this. I mean, Voracious uses locally grown hops, that sounds like farming to me, so I don't see why it shouldn't be up here.
A little stretch there, right? Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So if I make wine, I could bring that there too, right?
You got to ask Kelly.
Rob, you made a motion.
Make a motion to approve farmer's market to allow alcohol sales for off-site consumption.
Second.
Motion, I have a second. We'll call the row. Dominic?
Yes, yes.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Lupo, yes.
It's unanimous. Farmer's market.
Chairman, who was the second on that, please?
Nicole Lupo.
Sorry, thank you.
That's good, Ryan. Five to zero. Okay, very good.
Your voice a little bit.
Thank you, moving along, regulations and review work. I missed the last subcommittee meeting. Rick, can you inform, oh, wait a minute. Rob, were you there?
I was.
Let us know what happened.
I don't have the notes in front of me.
Well, more, you know, just informally.
Interior lots, we're considering resurrecting interior lots in the zoning regs. They were abolished X number of years ago.
And it wasn't that long ago that they were, they were allowed.
Right.
My house is on one that's less than 20 years old.
Yeah, the subcommittee directed staff to make a referral to the police and fire for their input.
All right.
For further discussion. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll be giving you a call to have a follow-up meeting on that. As you know, now we're getting into the holiday season, so it'll be sometime in June.
That's really all, it was a short meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, we, yeah, we really focused on that. And, oh, we did talk about lighting and the size of the caliber of the, of landscaping. Right now, a tree needs to be three and a half inch caliber and we're recommending, will be recommending it be reduced to two and a half. The lighting, there are a lot of standards and a lot of standards that pertain to the schools and the, and the lighting at the schools. And Leon reminded everyone that the commission went through a long public meeting on putting in the proper regulations to properly screen lighting glare with the abutting property orders. So it was, it was recommended to stay clear of the sight lighting standards, but concentrate on the landscaping, you know, to moderate it, reduce the minimum size, and then the interior lots. So staff will continue to address those issues.
Okay. So that's what's going on, Dominic.
Okay, well, thank you very much on that, Rob, especially for the subcommittee report because it makes a lot of sense to me now.
All right, well, we should be doing this every meeting, which I believe we have been. I have no, nothing special to report. And do any of the commissioners have anything?
I was going to report on that, but thank you for feeding me.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, before the whole pandemic kicked off, you know, myself and a couple of other commissioners were scheduled to go into a land use academy training refresher course down in Stratford. Remember, Ryan, it was, you know, a year and a half ago. So if that comes up, I just wanted to keep our eye out and.
Yeah, please.
Now that we're kind of getting through this.
I think.
All those.
Can I make a question? I think that those refresher courses are now online because of the pandemic. We can check that out and get you the information if that's the case.
Sounds good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Christine? Okay, any other commissioners have anything? Okay, then we'll go to Rick. So.
Yeah, I'm pleased to report that Francisco got back to me on Monday. He has finalized the remembrance page, Bill Porter. He's putting together the 15 final P O C D documents. All of the commissioners will get one. First selectmen office will get several of them. The library will get one as well too. And then we'll be able to, it'll be online, so you can review it online, but if you want a copy made, there'll be a charge.
Oh, it's not going to be on Amazon?
For sale.
You'll be receiving those shortly.
Okay, if that's it.
And we are having the interviews for the planning and zoning administrators position next week. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for participating.
All right. If there's nothing else, then the chair will accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second, call in favor.
Aye.